Counselor Isabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. You have.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. So at this time, I'd ask all counselors and guests to please rise as I introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I'll ask all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, and Counselor Flaherty, Mr. Clerk, please record Counselor Flaherty as being present as well. Thank you. Reverend Culpepper, would you like to come on? So today's my honor to introduce Reverend Minyard Culpepper, pastor of the historic Pleasant Hill Baptist Church, where he has served for the past 14 years. Pleasant Hill Baptist Church was founded by Reverend Culpepper's grandfather, the late Dr. Samuel Bullock Sr. in 1939. And Reverend Culpepper has previously also served in Washington DC. So we are very happy that he returned to Boston and is tending to our community here. He is no stranger to the folks in this room and throughout the political world in general in Boston and Massachusetts. I know he serves as close advisor to many who draw strength from him as they represent all of the constituents in our districts. He has received many, many awards, having been recognized as a hero of the housing and of HUD, and receiving the Vice Presidential Hammer Award in 1999 and two Best Practices Awards as well. Reverend Culpepper received his Bachelor of Arts degree from Brandeis University in 1976, his law degree from Suffolk University Law School. He also received a Master of Divinity degree from Howard University School of Divinity, and he lives in Boston and has two sons, Minyard Jr. and Jonathan. So it is my honor to again welcome Reverend Minyard Culpepper to the podium.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Let us pray. Our Lord and our Savior and our God, we come before you this morning, thanking you for another day. We thank you, oh God, for blessing us on this hallowed occasion. And I pray, Lord, that you would bless this council body. Bless the chairwoman in a special way. Bless the at-large council members in a special way. Lord, bless those that represent districts in a special way. And so, Lord, we come before you on this day, knowing that you're in charge of everything. We pray, Lord, that you would send down your power upon this body. Lord, we invoke your love. Lord, we invoke your peace. Lord, we invoke your humility. And we pray, oh God, that as they discuss and as they make laws and build this city, Lord, that they would build it based on justice and on what's right and what's good. We pray now that you will allow them to see that all that you've already given them. Bless them now, Lord, that they would lift up peace in this city, that they would lift up justice. And, Lord, as they make laws, let them make laws, Lord, that will manifest themselves throughout all the city. Touch everyone in this city through this council body in a special way, Lord. And we pray that you would just have mercy and your grace upon them even right now. Amen and amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Culpepper. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands on a nation under our invisible liberty and justice. Mr. Clerk, please also record Counselor Zachem as being present. So first, we will take up the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. And just so everybody is clear on procedure, what we'll do today is first take docket 0138 out of order. It has all of the rules of the City Council, so we'll vote on those and in doing so, hopefully create our new committee structure. And then from that point on, we'll be able to assign dockets into the new committees. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll reassign dockets from last week into their proper new committees. So, Mr. Clerk, if we could please take docket 0138 out of order.
Docket 0138, Counselor Wu offered the following. Order for the rules for the Boston City Council to be adopted for municipal years 2016 and
Is there a second? So just to clarify for everyone, the only changes to these rules, the only substantive changes to these rules were the new committee descriptions. Okay, so seeing no comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0138 has been passed. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0127, message in order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $1,600,000 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services. This fiscal year 16, EOHHS Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, SSYI, to support Boston's most high-risk young men and women, most likely to be involved in gun violence as both victim and perpetrator.
Docket 0127 will be placed in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Sure, yes, please, Mr. Clerk. Dockets 0128 through 0130, please.
Docket number 128, message in order authorizing the Boston Public Library to accept and expend a donation of $10,000 from Digitus LBI to assist the Boston Public Library with developing a creative concept for the reopening of the Johnson Building. Docket number 0129, message in order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend funding of $1,739 from West Ed. Funds will be utilized by Boston Police Department's Office of Research and Development to query incidents, arrests, and other related categories data for the years 2009 through 2015. And docket number 0130, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept donated services and materials valued at $670 from the New England Carpenter's Training Fund for the purposes of refurbishing the City of Boston's podium for the mayor's office.
Okay, we will take each of these three items separately. There's been requests to suspend and pass each of them, given the timing and the smaller nature of the grants. So for docket 0128, Counselor McCarthy moved for suspension and passage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Docket 0128 has been suspended and passed. Docket 0129, Counselor Campbell moved suspension and passage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Docket 0129 has been suspended and passed. And finally, Counselor Siomo moved suspension and passage of docket 0130. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Docket 0130 has been suspended and passed. Petitions, memorials, and remonstrances, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0131, petition of Joe Kubinek Transportation for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Docket 0131 will be sent to the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation. Reports of public officers and others. And, Mr. Clerk, if you could read all four of these dockets together, please.
Docket number 0132, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:00 AM until 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 5, 2015. Docket number 0133, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Alexandra Oliver de Villa as a member of the Boston School Committee for the term expiring January 6, 2020. And docket number 0134, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Mirin Yurate as a member of the Boston School Committee for the term expiring January 6, 2020. And docket number 0135, communication was received from Sally D. Glora, City Auditor, regarding the City of Boston's fiscal 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Basic Financial State.
Dockets 0132, 0133, 0134, and 0135 will be placed on file. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0136, Counselors McCarthy and Wu offered the following. Order for a hearing regarding inconsistencies in commuter rail fares and the effect of this policy on local community.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is a refile from last year. We didn't have a chance, an opportunity to have a hearing last year. Again, to highlight some of the stations, we have in 02136, we have three commuter rail stops and three different pay prices that range from 625 down to 210, which is insane, in my opinion. We also have the Rosendale T stop, as well as in Counselor O'Malley's district, the Highland Station, which is overpriced for our citizens of Boston. So we're going to take a peek at exactly how we can positively affect those rates through the MBTA, and I'm looking forward to having this hearing. Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to congratulate you and my good colleague, Counselor McCarthy, for this refile. Ask that my name be again added. Suffice it to say, this is a very, very important issue, and Boston rates should be for people who live in the City of Boston. Quite a few that do aren't able to, have to pay higher prices, and it's just unfair and wrong. So I look forward to quick action, and thank you both for your leadership. Ask that my name be added.
Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor O'Malley's name. And please also add Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Presley. Docket 0136 will be assigned, oh, did you want to speak, Counselor Jackson? Apologies. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Madam President, I rise just to compliment you as well as the other maker, because you are ahead of the curve, based on what the commuter rail as well as T is actually doing. I think this council needs to take a strong stand on what is before the T right now. So people need to understand, they are trying to lower, for express buses, the pass for $168 to $130, right? And those are suburban communities that are going really far out. And for bus passes, and this is something that we're going to deal with in education, they're trying to raise bus and T passes from $50 for a bus pass to $59, right? So there's an inequity there that we are actually, that is being entertained by the MBTA. But I just want to acknowledge the fact that you actually had sniffed this out and had been ahead of the curve with this hearing, and I hope some of those things will also be brought to the table. This is going to affect the school budget to the tune of potentially $1.4 million. And it does beg the question, about two years ago, we put 7th and 8th graders on the T. So at some point, we're actually going to have to ask the question was, is that less expensive to keep them on the T or actually to put them on yellow buses? And I know we have an able Ways and Means Chair who is very conservative with our funds and will be wanting to figure that out. So I just wanted to put that on record, and I'd like to add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name as well. Docket 0136 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation.
Docket number 0137, Counselor Jackson offered the following. Ordinance exempting the elderly and disabled from city snow removal requirements.
Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise to introduce a piece of legislation that doesn't, that we don't often have, where we actually have a connection between our seniors and our young people. And this piece of legislation has been passed in Newton, Revere, Cambridge, Somerville, and Worcester. And we give our elders conflicting messages. We say we care about them and we want them to avoid slip and fall risks. We know that too often, when an individual hurts their hip, that actually could be potentially fatal. We also say that cardiovascular issues are some things, are sometimes exacerbated by shoveling too much. But at the same time, we write tickets for them when they can't shovel in front of their home. I want to acknowledge that this piece of legislation was drafted by someone who used to be an intern in my office and now has moved on to actually work in my office, Alexandra Knowles. So I'm very happy this actually came from one of the young people that we're talking about. And so essentially, how this would work is individuals who are 60 or older would receive an exemption. They would have to opt in. I did have a friendly amendment, Madam President, that was tossed in my direction earlier from an individual from Brighton on the council, who was actually 59 and actually wanted to be included. I actually had to turn that amendment down. The reason why is the age 60 is where our elderly commission starts, supporting people in our city. So the reason why I chose age 60 was because in Boston, we're more aggressive. We do a little bit more than some other places based on that age. And just a little bit about this, roughly 15% of Boston's population is elderly, another 9%, possibly 9% is disabled. And the real objective is to alleviate the stress. And then the second part of this is actually to connect them with young people. We all speak about summer youth jobs and also full-time and full-year jobs for our young people. Connecting those young people with an opportunity to make money during the school year and giving them the opportunity to help out their elders. And so I submit this with really the thought in mind of what type of city we want to live in. We want our elders to age in place. We want them to be able to stay in their own homes and to be parts of our neighborhoods and community. We've found that it actually costs less to keep people in their own homes and to support them there, and that people are happier in those settings rather than being removed from their homes. We want to have a city where we can support people from cradle to their twilight years. And I look forward to advancing this legislation and making sure that we deal with, well, hopefully we never have to have snow again in the City of Boston. I very much doubt that. So when we do have snow, we do want to look towards the contract that we have with our elders. They took care of us when we were young. It's our job to take care of them as they get older. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to commend the maker for addressing an important issue. I'm the only member here who possibly could directly benefit from this. And as you all know, that I take my fitness and my contribution to whatever I can do seriously, so that, you know, someone at 65, which I am, may have the ability to do this. And I like the idea that Counselor Jackson has given folks the option to sign up and to join. We had some other discussions in the past about folks who would not shovel their walks. And two of the issues that came up was, one, the fining of those individuals, but then the application of those resources to cleaning the streets, which has never been further developed. So I would hope that in this conversation moving forward, that if someone signs up and then others who have the ability and don't sign up, don't clean their walk, they get fined, and that we take into consideration cleaning, both the walk of those who aren't able and those who are, with the resources that are generated. It's an important issue because all of us can be hurt crossing a sidewalk that is ice, especially if you live on a hill or any place that has incline or decline. It can be extremely dangerous, and that would, I think that would help. So I look forward to the dialogue. I hope we can expand this a bit. I truly appreciate Counselor Jackson looking out for me at this stage in my career.
The limit.
And please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Linehan's name. Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to commend the maker and ask that my name be added. This is a big issue, particularly all of us dealt with this last year, making sure that our elderly homes are shoveled. But we need to really make sure that there's a system in place for those who can shovel, that someone from the city or responsible party will shovel those sidewalks. Because if we don't shovel those sidewalks, they get icy, and they're dangerous for elderly to walk down the street or kids to go to school. So I commend them. Every neighborhood has community groups, like the Silesian Boys and Girls Club in East Boston, the Childstown Boys and Girls Club in Childstown. Maybe we could do something with the red shirts, that a portion of those summer jobs, we save them for the summer. And so, I mean, for the summer jobs, we save them for the winter, so we'll have a crew that works out of the community centers during the wintertime, so they can help with this endeavor to take care of our seniors. So I look forward to hearing and ask that my name be added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Lamatina's name. Counselor Zachem.
Madam President, let me start off by apologizing for being tardy to your first meeting. As a council president, I'm suitably ashamed. And I do want to, you know, again, compliment Counselor Jackson. I'm bringing this forward. I think it's an important issue, and I think I look forward to the hearing on the matter. But I do just want to add on to Counselor Lamatina's comments that, you know, my concern, as much for our older residents, like our colleague, Counselor Linehan, shoveling their sidewalks, I do worry about access and accessibility for the disabled community, not just people who are unable to shovel their sidewalks, but people getting to and from their homes, their work, school, the supermarket, the doctor's office. So I think this is something that we need to explore through the hearing process, but I would certainly want to make sure that we have, whether it's city workers, young people who are signed up for this, I think a fail-safe mechanism to make sure that these places are cleared of snow for really anyone who has trouble getting around, or even, you know, certainly, you know, able-bodied people could have a hard time getting around in two feet of snow as well. So with that caveat, I look forward to supporting this and working with my colleagues to make a change here. Thank you.
Would you like your name to be added? Counselor Zachem. Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Mr. Clerk, please record Counselor Zachem's name as well. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to thank the maker, my good friend, Counselor Jackson from District 7. I think this is a very intriguing idea, and it's certainly something that we have had to deal with virtually time, all time. Shortly after I was elected and, or sworn in in November of 2010, the December of 2010, you may remember, we had four storms almost every week, and there was a tremendous amount of snow on the ground, not as much as last year, but it was very quick. And my office worked with Ethos and AgeWell West Roxbury, which is another great social service agency, to try to help identify and support some of these elders. Roughly a quarter of West Roxbury's populations are senior citizens. And sadly, but perhaps unsurprisingly, the number of volunteers to help at the Snow Angel Program didn't quite meet our need. Nevertheless, we did a good job. Ethos deserves tremendous work. They continue to do it. So I want to make sure that we're able to, as we go forward, identify some sort of partnership to make sure, as has been said by virtually every speaker, that we could perhaps create some sort of revolving fund that would allow for hiring or paying young people, as many of us did growing up, get a couple extra bucks every time it snowed. Lord knows I did that as a teenager in the city, to enable, to make sure that that passability and that these sidewalks are cleared. The other concern that I know we will flesh out in the process of the hearings and the working sessions will be landlords who may be above the age of 60 who do not reside in those buildings. I would hate to see them take advantage of this when otherwise they could clean it, as well as some business owners as well. So there's a lot of questions, but I think there's the potential for an opportunity here that would allow those that, for whatever reason, elders who cannot shovel, would have an opportunity for some relief, but make sure that we do it well and we do it right. So I do ask that my name be added, and look forward to the hearing and the legislative process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor O'Malley's name. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wish to rise and commend my good friend from District 7 for putting forward this idea. It is certainly worth exploring. I do just, you know, want to offer something, you know, that's a bit sobering perhaps, and it just speaks to the issue of healthy community, because government is having to stand in the gap here, because family and community are no longer doing that. In the same way that we have a program where seniors, if they need support in changing the light bulbs in their homes or the batteries in their smoke detectors, I once inquired who was calling that program, and it was the children and grandchildren of many of these elders, many of them that live in this city. So it does speak to a deeper issue and sort of, and I'm interested in what we can do to strengthen the opportunity for communities to be healthy and to be more neighborly, because this does speak to the breakdown of that, where we've seen efforts in the North End where community came together and organized vans to take seniors to the supermarket, because the North End is a food desert in that way, and our seniors were suffering. So where is there the opportunity truly here to empower community and to fix these deficits that exist? The other thing that I would offer, because I love, and I hope that you'll name that in the ordinance, because the youth element isn't cited in it, but there was a program in Brooklyn that I had explored called Foot Soldiers, which was specifically about supporting youth in this employment opportunity. What I heard, and we were looking to AmeriCorps to partner with us, but it just collapsed for a host of reasons, but we hear from so many elders that, yes, we organically see youth that will come to their door to shovel, but they are often too afraid to open the door. And so there is a real need to professionalize this, to provide badges and credentials, so that our seniors won't be afraid of who's coming to the door. And then, again, the other aspect of this is the fostering of that intergenerational relationship and fostering that sense of neighborhood pride in our youth and helping to maintain a home. So I think there's a lot there there. Thank you for putting this forward, Counselor Jackson. I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Please, Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Presley's name. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to add my name. I wasn't going to say anything until Counselor Lamatina said red shirts, and I had like some flashbacks going on there, as I was director of that program for 10 years. We had a winter work program back in the day where kids would report to the local community centers. They get paid X amount. The senior citizen lists would go through the community center, whether it was the Hypeak Muni, the Rosendale Community Center, Mildred Ave., Madahunt, whatever's in your district. They'd have 10, 8, 10, 12 kids show up. They got a little pullover vest that would go over there, and they would, we'd have lists of shovels, you know, places that we need to shovel. They'd use the community center van. It's a very simple program, fairly inexpensive. The concern I have with something big like this is there's 1,600 miles of sidewalk in the City of Boston. So by helping somebody, and Billy's in better shape than 80% of the people in this room, so, and he's already thrown out his shovels, which is very disappointing, but, you know, when you look at 1,600 miles of sidewalk, you're going to help some senior citizens clearly who need it, but you're also going to push kids who are going to school on the street until we figure out that gap. So it's going to be a very interesting conversation as we finish. So please add my name, and I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor McCarthy's name. Does anyone else like to add their name to this? Please add the chair's name. Docket 0137 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. So at this time, I'd like to reassign the matters from last week's meeting that were sent into the committee of the whole to their proper new committee. So you can find these on page 1 of 1 in the green sheets. We'll start with docket 0100. Mr. Clerk, please assign docket 0100 to the Committee on Government Operations. Okay, I have been corrected by the clerk. We should actually read the docket into the record and then they will be reassigned. So docket 0100, please.
Petition to the General Court entitled "Petition for a Special Law and Act Relative to Election Nomination Petitions in the City of Boston." This petition will create a more equitable process for candidates.
So again, docket 0100 will be reassigned from the Committee of the Whole to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0101, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Mark Sikoni, CPA, as a member of the Audit Committee for a term expiring November 1, 2020.
Docket 0101 will be reassigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0102, message in order authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept and expend a grant of $400,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Officer Environmental Affairs for the renovations to Roberts Playground located in the neighborhood of Dorchester.
Docket 0102 will be reassigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation and Transportation.
Docket number 0103, message in order authorizing the City of Boston Transportation Department to accept and expend a grant of $95,600 from the Boston College Neighborhood Improvement Fund to support subway bike share stations in Brighton.
Docket 0103 will be reassigned to the Committee on Neighborhood Services, City and Neighborhood Services, and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0105, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Jean Lavezque as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending November 1, 2018.
Docket 0105 will be reassigned to the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0107, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Residency Policy Commission Re-Residency Recommendation.
Docket 0107 will be reassigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
And docket 0109, order for a hearing to discuss diversity in post-secondary institutions.
Docket 0109 will be reassigned to the Committee on Education. Okay, we will move on to late filed. There are two late filed matters in the hands of the clerk, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you would, please read the first edition.
Offered by the Mayor, an ordinance amending residency requirements and enforcement in the city of Boston.
The first late filed matter will be sent to the Committee on Government Operations. Second late filed matter, please, Mr. Clerk.
Offered by City Councilors Linehan and Baker, Home Rule Petition for a Special Law and Act Regarding Attacks on Certain Alcoholic Beverages.
Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for the late filed matter, having spent two years dealing with them up there that at times they can become abundant. I also want to congratulate you on your first full meeting here. You're doing an extraordinary job. This particular matter here is a home rule petition which has been truly honed and finalized over the past two years, three years, actually. The matter here in front of us is that we propose that a 2.5% tax be levied on all consumption of alcohol, both at off-premise alcohol sales and on-premise alcohol sales. 2% potentially could generate over $20 million that would be directed at the war against addiction and for the war on addiction to support all of the programs that are presently in place. Although it is refiled in its intention, I'd ask all the members to please read this closely because the devil is in the details. And we worked diligently with the administration and we worked with corporate counsel to come up with a document that one, if passed here, could be signed and have weight up at the state legislature. We hear every single day about the scourge of drugs in our community, in our city, in our nation. And what this particular matter does, it creates an opportunity to fight the war with Much of the dialogue and much of the rhetoric to date has been about using existing resources, realigning resources, coming up with some programs that are, that may assist in existing programs. But this here would help foster new programs. It would address the issues of prevention, intervention, and treatment. And for a city our size, this amount of money is what's needed to address the issue. We have around 15% to 17% of the issues of the treatment center that, of our own people who live in our city, but we generally address 25% of the state's population in dealing with it. So this is an issue that 2%, 20 cents on a $10 drink, 20% are on a, it would be about 14 cents on a six-pack, that would go directly to servicing and enhancing the fight against addiction. Now, there are three culprits in addiction. One is prescribed opiates, the illegal sale of drugs around heroin and others, fentanyl, and then there's alcohol. 50% easily of all treatment is generated through the addiction to alcohol, if not more. And deaths across America, there are 28,000 deaths across America from opiate and drug addiction. There was over 30,000 from alcohol in one year. Alcohol is the only place that we have an ability to target a potential addiction substance that could be taxed for this particular purpose. You cannot tax prescription drugs and all the other substances are illegal and therefore can't be taxed. We flushed this out for three years. This is the best document that we come up with. And all of you participated and we've listened to the alcohol industry, we've listened to the people who are in the recovery industry, and we've listened to all the people who have been affected. Every single family, every single block in this city has been affected by the scourge. We need resources to fight the war. We need the equipment to fight the war and we need, we have the skills, but we don't have the personnel to fight the war. And we need all of that and the only thing that will give us that is money. And this is a document coming out of this body that would generate money for this city. And we need all of your support and the support of others moving forward for this particular matter. So I thank you for the opportunity. Again, I apologize for the late file and I ask for my colleagues to please join me and sign on in this particular matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Excuse me, the second late filed matter will be assigned to the Committee on Government Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Counselor Flaherty.
Madam President, just would like to ask for reconsideration on docket 0107 that was assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Just ask that that matter be placed on file.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Jackson. So we are voting now to move docket 0107, the Residency Policy Commission's report from the Committee on Government Operations, to be placed on file. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, docket 0107 has been placed on file. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Any other matters from the green sheets? Okay, and there are four late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. Are we good, Alex? I'd like to ask all guests and all members now to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, Joseph Aiello. For Counselor Lamatina, David Bowie, Robert Bueno-Payne, Gerald J. Swan, Gennario M. Del Prite, John D. Di Stefano, Mary C. Di Ambrogio. For Counselor McCarthy, Lieutenant Paul Michael Sullivan, Jr. A moment of silence, please. We're going to have one more moment of silence because the Chair has forgotten some additions. The council would also like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Judy Gutman for Counselors Asabi George and Counselor Baker and Laura Levy for Counselor Baker. Again, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it be to meet again on January 27 at 12 noon. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.